Twenty-five shall come to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second? By Dana, seconded by Mark that we approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Now I'll ask for approval of the consent agenda, which includes the following. A, approval of the city council meeting minutes of October 20th, 2025. Approval of the bills and claims, of which you have a copy. Approval of tax abatement application from Audrey Knight, 202 Glen Oaks Drive. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second? Moved by Beth Ann, seconded by Mark that we approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same. Motion carries. Now is the time and place for any citizen in the audience who wishes to address the council on any issue or concern that is not on the agenda, please approach the podium, state your name first and last, and give your address so the clerk can properly enter the minutes. This is not a discussion time, nor a question and answer time, and you have three to five minutes. None appearing, we'll move on to five unfinished business. Five A, an ordinance amending official zoning and land use map rezoning request, 502 South 12th Street. And this is on ordinance number 892 on the third and final reading. It's an ordinance amending the official zoning and land use maps of the city of Clear Lake, Iowa to rezone certain property from medium density, single-family residential RS8 to intensive commercial CI1. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Beth Ann, seconded by Dana that we approve ordinance number 892 on the third and final reading. Is there any discussion? Roll call. Mark?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Beth Ann?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
And Dana?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five zero, an ordinance number 892 is now duly adopted. Five B, ordinance vacating right-of-way and disposing of the city's interest by sale. Need a motion to approve ordinance number 893 on the second of three readings. This is an ordinance vacating certain undeveloped street right-of-way adjoining 1313 Second Avenue South and disposing of the city's interest therein by sale to the adjoining property owner. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Mark, seconded by Beth Ann that we approve ordinance number 893 on the second of three readings. Is there any discussion? Roll call. Creighton?
Yes.
Beth Ann?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five zero, and it's approved. 893 is approved on the second reading. New business. Six A, Surf District Streetscape Improvement Project. Project update and review of pay estimate number seven. Matt Steading, City Engineer, welcome, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Hope everybody's having a good start to your week. So we are going to be going through payout number seven here for the streetscape project. Please note that original contract sum minus the net change orders there to Dean Snyder in the amount of $3,528,898.45 total completed and stored to date minus our standard 5% retainage at the time brings us to the amount of $2,944,257.1. We have our previous payments of $2,557,766.73 brings us to that current payment due So just a quick update, I think everybody's probably noticed by now that the arch is up and it was painted. That was a two-part system, which was completed last Wednesday and Thursday, and then the portion of Friday. Right now, we're currently waiting on the signage company to finish making their cabinet section that will be mounted on the circular portion of the arch, and that will have the Surf District logos as well as where the music lives logos on both the front and backside of the arch, and then that center hub will all be lit up as well. So pretty excited to see that going, and hopefully that's a great turnout, I think that it will be, so. And then we have the Lake Connection piece buttoned up on the project. We have pretty much all of the plants installed, and everything is looking pretty good down there. And we have some, there's a number of odds and end pieces that have to be buttoned up and reviewed, and there's going to be a few things that'll have to be finished next spring. There, we're still hoping there's quite a bit of masonry work left on the project and caps especially to get put on top of the piers, so we're hoping that some of that can get done maybe yet this year, but some of that may have to be in the spring, so. You guys have any questions for me?
There's that, I only noticed it because I ran over it tonight coming here, but the North Shore Drive almost directly opposite of the Surf, coming toward City Park, there's a big square that's open and gravel down about.
Oh, that was to do with the demo project that happened on North Shore, so that'll be filled back in here soon.
All right, all right. I thought, what was that? It was dark, and I didn't see it this morning, but I sure fell in it this afternoon, so it must have been worked over.
You hit that on your bicycle today?
My trike. Yeah, yeah. Any further comments, questions, or Matt, Council? Okay, thanks, Matt. Appreciate your work down there as well. Therefore, entertain a motion to approve pay estimate number seven in the amount of $386,490.28 to Dean Snyder Construction of Clear Lake. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Dana, seconded by Bennett that we approve pay estimate number seven to Dean Snyder Construction with regard to the Surf District Streetscape Improvement Project. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Thank you. Six B, development agreement with CRJ Properties LLC. Introduction, Steve Deers, our city administrator. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good evening. Yeah, so tonight we're going to be holding the public hearing on the development agreement with CRJ Properties. And that's the building, and they're owned by Jessica Wood, houses three businesses. They recently redeveloped that. Did the main building, ended up with three upper-floor dwelling units as well. And so what this development agreement will do, will rebate 90% of those taxes over the next six years. That'll be realized from those increases. So this is a property located at 2 North 4th Street. As I mentioned, it houses Livonia's and Charlie's Soda Factory and a jewelry and body piercing shop. Will be using the base value of $359,000, which was the value that was, where it was currently before the improvements were made. And this project actually was completed about a year or so ago, so we actually know what that new value is going to be. It's already on the tax roll, so this one is a little unique in that by approving it now, we'll actually be making our first rebate payment here this December, because they've already made their first increase payment this last fall, so this one actually gets off and running right away. That six years, 90%, we anticipate that being no more than $75,000 in total value for the rebate, so over the course of the year, of course of the six years, whatever happens first, either the six years or the 75,000, that's what, that's what limits that. So typical language in this agreement, annual appropriation, that's pretty standard, so we do that with all of our TIF rebate agreements, or TIF agreements in general. The final end date of this would appear to be June 1st of 2031. And I think that's about the long and the short of it. Questions?
Any comments or questions? Or Steve, Council? Thank you, Steve. Now is the time and place for a public hearing with regard to the development agreement with CRJ Properties. Anyone in the audience wishes to address that, please approach the podium, state your name first and last, give your address so that the city clerk can enter the minutes. None appearing, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Beth Ann, seconded by Mark that we close the public hearing with regard to the development agreement with CRJ Properties LLC. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Now entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2542. A resolution approving development agreement with CRJ Properties LLC authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second? Moved by Dana, seconded by Mark that we approve Resolution 2542. Is there any further discussion? Roll call. Beth Ann?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Creighton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five zero. Resolution 2542 is duly adopted. Moving on to six C, annual urban renewal tax increment finance reporting for the fiscal year 25. Review by Jacob Widman, our Director of Finance and Administrative Services. Welcome, Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight we'll be going over the annual urban renewal report. It's in your packet there in the blue sheets. So just the first sheet in your packet there, that's just a simple resolution approving the report. And then I'll jump to the next, which is my cover letter, and then we'll go through the report a little bit, too. So in the, in the report here, it's the balance as of 630, 2025, so a couple months ago. The total tax revenues received in our urban renewal area for the year were just over $2 million. That was down around $660,000 from the previous year, just because we certified a little bit less. Rebate expenditures totaled $729,000, which was up just a little bit from the year before, but you kind of anticipate that with property values going up a little bit. And I think we might have had a new rebate come on, too. I think Pritchards came on, as well as Sukups, so that was part of the reason for the increases. Other TIF rebate expenditures totaled just over 1.2 million, and at the end of the period, the balance in the account was $2,063,966, which was a slight increase from the balance of $2,8196 the year before. Overall, the report does show an outstanding TIF balance of debt, outstanding as of the end of the fiscal year to be $14,700 and change. And as I go through the report, I'll kind of hit on those numbers a little bit more. So the first page of the report you have in your, in your packet there, just kind of shows a summary. It shows that 14 million of outstanding debt as of the end of the period, shows the cash balance at the beginning of the period, the different revenues. So we had TIF revenues of 1.9, 120,000 of interest that we received on those funds that were sitting there. So, and then you have your total revenue number, and then the rebate expenditures that I mentioned, and also the non-rebate expenditures. The second page of your report there just kind of shows, we have one urban renewal area here in town. It's called the Consolidated Urban Renewal Area. But within that area, we have multiple tax districts and TIF districts. So those are kind of laid out on your page there. You will note on the right side of that page on the columns there where it says increment value used, we did, we only asked for just right around 2 million in TIF revenue for this fiscal year. And so that's why of all the districts that are showing there, only four of them did we actually take increment value from. So there was quite a bit of increment value that we did give back in this fiscal year that we're looking at here. The next page then, actually the next three pages goes over the debt outstanding in, in the urban renewal area. And so that's anywhere from the rebate agreements that we have in place to the different, we have a couple loans outstanding, and so those are all spelled out in those next pages. I'm not going to go into details on them, but those are the details of what make up that 14 million dollars that's on the, on the front page there. After the debts and obligations, it shows the detail of the rebate expenditures. So during the period, sorry, the first page is non-rebate expenditures, then the next page is rebate expenditures. So non-rebate expenditures, we have the bonds for the Marriott that are still outstanding out there that we paid on, some Surf District stuff that we made some payment on, Emerald Edge Infrastructure, Bodhi Holly Place Improvements, and East Main. Those were the five things that were non-rebate expenditures that we made payments on during the year. The rebate expenditures then that were made during the year are on the next page, and you'll see those were the four, the five of them listed there. So McKesson, Nicum, JSM Investments, which is the Marriott, Monberg, which is the Boulevard out there next to the Marriott, and then One Team Quest Way, which is Pritchard's. So, and that's the end of the report. Any questions on any of that? Just a reminder, that is the 630, 25 report, so I mean, that's what's happened in the past here. The next thing I'll be going over is the certification for this year, which you guys won't see for two more years in the report. So it is something that when we do the certification and then when we do the report, it is very delayed, but just so you guys have an understanding kind of of that timeline.
So. Counsel, any comments or questions for Jacob? Thank you, Jacob. Therefore, entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2543, a resolution approving the fiscal year 2025 urban renewal tax increment financing report. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Bennett, seconded by Beth Ann that we approve Resolution 2543. Is there any discussion? Roll call. Bennett?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
And Beth Ann?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five zero, and Resolution 2543 is duly adopted. Six D, tax increment financing, annual appropriations and certification. Once again, review by Jacob Widman, our Director of Finance and Administrative Services.
Thank you once again, Mayor and Council. Some more numbers to throw at you here, so now that we went over what happened in the past, we'll be looking at doing our annual appropriation and our certification here coming up for next fiscal year, so for fiscal year 27 coming up here. So the first thing you have in your packet there under the green sheets is our annual appropriation resolution. So if you recall tonight, you did the development agreement for CRJ Properties, that, in that we entered into a rebate agreement. We have multiple other rebate agreements outstanding, so that it doesn't have to be counted as debt on the city's books, we do this annual appropriation resolution where we say, okay, for next, for the upcoming budget year, we're going to appropriate these funds to be paid towards those rebate agreements. And I have spreadsheets that I complete to kind of do an estimate of, here's what we think the rebate's going to be for that year. So I'll just kind of walk through each one of what we're estimating the rebate to do and what we're asking you guys to appropriate in that budget year for these. So, so this starts out underneath the third whereas in that appropriation resolution that you have in front of you. The first one there is for Monberg Land Company, which is the Boulevard out there, and we're estimating the tax rebate on that to be 40,000. The next one is for One Team Quest Way, and we're anticipating the tax rebate on that one to be 10,000. JSM Investments, 185,000. McKesson Corporation, 590,000. 40,000 to VSA2 LLC, which is the old Serta plant out there, which Sukup owns now. The next one is 10,000 to DXU Investments, which is Lake Pin and Play. And then the final one there is 15,000 to CRJ Properties. And as Steve mentioned, we will be starting the rebate payments here this fiscal year, so that 15,000 includes this year and next year's as well to appropriate. So the total then of all the rebate appropriations is 890,000 that we're asking you guys to appropriate for the December 1st certification, and then that would be for the fiscal year 27 budget. Any questions on that resolution before I jump to the certification? The certification then is the next sheets in your packet. The first page of the certification just shows a total of the new debt that we're certifying this December 1st. That is 2.1 million dollars. That includes that 890,000 included in the appropriation resolution. In the next pages, it kind of goes through those amounts that I just laid out in the appropriation resolution, because this, this is a document that we send directly over to the county. The other in addition to those rebates that we're, are putting in this year is Lake Pin and Play for the economic development loan that we did to them, and for signage reimbursement, and that totals 360,000. The Chamber and Visitor Center building project, we allocated 250 to them, so certifying to that 250. And then the Lake Theater renovation project, where we allocated 600 to them. So adding those all together, that's where we come up with that one, 2.1 million dollars. The next page then in your packet, just as a certification page of what we want to receive in the district based on our outstanding obligations and the new certification. So historically, we've done 3 million dollars on this. You'll notice the report that we just went over, it was a little bit lower because we didn't have quite as much outstanding and certified then, but we did, in the current fiscal year, move that back up to 3 million, and we're going to request 3 million again. With our urban renewal areas, we have had a couple districts sunset on us. So the, the total available might not reach to that 3 million this year, it might be closer to 2.5. But unless our, if our projections were off, we said we don't want to receive any more than 3 million. So that's what's on that page. And then the final page is anything that we've previously certified that we, we are decertifying now. So those annual appropriations that we do for the tax rebates, it's just an estimate. And so then when the actual number comes in, we decertify if it's under, and we usually try to, to have it a little bit over, but to be really close. So as you see, most of those rebate agreements are within a thousand dollars that we're decertifying. We also, the interest that we receive, we decertified that because we don't really need to receive the increment value for that because we're receiving it in interest. And then there was one development agreement that we certified for Hy-Vee back when we thought that they were coming in a few years ago. And at this point, that one's expired, so if they were to come in, we would do a new development agreement with, for them for that. So we are decertifying that as well this year. So, and that's the report. Any questions on any of that?
Since it's expired, do you have to notify them?
No, it's, it, there was, there was dates within the development agreement that they had to complete the work, and it's outside of those dates now by multiple years, and so if they wanted to come in, we'd have to do a new one with them.
Any other comments, questions, Council, Jacob?
Just want to say, thank you, Jake. Appreciate your work on this. It takes a lot of time, so.
Yeah, this time of year always takes a lot of time, making sure things tie out and we got everything covered coming up, because I mean, it is delayed with property taxes here, and so I mean, we're looking at something for fiscal year 27 here, and we're just at the end of 25, and so it, it does take a lot of planning and a lot of work behind the scenes to make sure that we're doing, doing it all correct and have everything in order for the upcoming period here.
You bet. Thank you.
Well done. Well done. Thank you, Jake. For entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2544, a resolution obligating funds from the Clearly Consolidated Urban Renewal Tax Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations, which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second? Moved by Dana, seconded by Mark that we approve Resolution 2544. Is there any discussion? Roll call. Dana?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Beth Ann?
Yes.
And Bennett?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five zero. Resolution 2544 is duly adopted. And now we have another motion here, a motion to approve tax increment financing indebtedness certification to the county auditor. Motion for that, please.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Beth Ann, seconded by Creighton, that we approve the tax increment financing indebtedness certification. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Thank you. Six E, Music Experience Center lease with the North Iowa Cultural Center and Museum. Enter on review. Steve Deers, welcome again, Steve.
Yes, good evening, once again, Mayor and Council. Yep, so tonight we're going to be looking to set public hearing to discuss the MEC lease with the city. We'll be setting public hearing for December 1st at 5:30. And just to, I guess, give you some background, on the MEC lease is something we've been working on for quite a bit over the last few weeks. I think we're, you know, you have a draft version in your packet there that I feel is very close to what the final version will read. There are a couple areas that we're still working through to figure out the best language and wording that the city could be acceptable to and that the NICUM board would be acceptable to. But I think all in all, we're really close to having that completed, so I think we feel pretty good about going forward with setting public hearing tonight to be able to look to have that public hearing and discuss in full on December 1st. Something that, I know the, you know, the, having a lease agreement in place is something that's contingent upon them having a long-term liquor license there to be able to operate, and so that's one of the reasons we want to try and get this accomplished here before, before too long, so. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Steve, Council? Thank you. Steve, therefore entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2545, a resolution setting a date of a public hearing, which shall be December 1st at 5:30 PM right here in the council chambers, on the lease agreement between the city of Clear Lake and the North Iowa Cultural Center and Museum for the lease of the Music Experience Center located at 460 North Shore Drive. Motion, please.
So moved.
Question? By Mark, seconded by Creighton, that we approve Resolution 2545. Is there any further discussion? Roll call. Mark?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Beth Ann?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
And Dana?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five zero. Resolution 2545 is duly adopted. Moving right along now, six F, tentative agreement with Teamsters Local, number 238, and Clear Lake Police Department. Review, once again, Mr. Deers.
Yes, all right. So October 9th, we spent the better part of the afternoon working on the wage reopener for the union contract for the police department. Currently, that contract has two more years on it, fiscal year 27, fiscal year 28, and so we went into the discussion and the negotiation to discuss wages for fiscal year 27 and 28 if we could, and ultimately, we were able to come to a tentative agreement. That tentative agreement would read as both years fiscal year, starting July 1st, 2026, and fiscal year, July 1st, 2027, we would look at, at 4% across board increases for each of those years. There is a difference there between sworn and non-s sworn officers, where non-s sworn officers would also get an additional 25 cents market adjustment on there, and that was due to previous negotiations where they didn't get as much of an increase as the sworn officers did, so that was kind of a way to kind of make up for that. So we, we met with them, we worked with Mike Galloway from Ayers and Cooney, who I've worked with personally historically, too, with union negotiations. I was happy to see that we worked with him here as well, and he really is able to get. And he really is able to give a good analysis of the market conditions and what's out there and what we're seeing for raises. And I think we're pretty happy with the four percent increase here for the next two years. They seem to be, for police especially, they, they've been pretty high the last couple of years, and now they seem to be maybe leveling off a little bit. So I think we're happy with the four percent for each year.
Counsel, any questions for Steve? Thank you. And therefore entertain a motion to approve a tentative agreement with the Teamsters Local Number Two Thirty-eight of the, the Clear Lake Police Department. Motion, please.
Second.
Moved by Creighton, seconded by Dana.
Yep.
That we approve the tentative agreement with Teamsters Local Two Thirty-eight. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Welcome, Chief Colby. Chief Police Report.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of quick things to report to you. Last week on Thursday, we completed all of the EMD train for all the dispatchers, the emergency medical dispatch train. So we've talked about before in the room here, that's a program that the dispatcher uses when they call nine-one-one for a medical emergency, and it gives them some pre-arrival instructions for the caller to give care to those that are in medical need. They've all gone through that training. It was completed Thursday. We had a meeting Friday morning with the fire department, and they're finalizing some last-minute procedures and protocols for the implementation of that. And we will have that probably rolled out here in the next couple of weeks, if not by the first of the year, to be using on every medical call that comes into the nine-one-ones that are there. The tool is available to them, they're all certified in the use of it, so they can use it now if they need to. But we wanted to give them some time to fill out the program, adjust some of their procedures of nine-one-one calls come in and radio calls come at the same time, so they can get comfortable with it, and then looking at sometime, no later than the first to have a hard hundred percent use on all those nine-one-one calls. There are a couple caveats won't be used. If doctor's office calls in, they have higher medical care or medical staff than a layperson there in any of those directions, they wouldn't use that, those procedures there too. Or when a first responder arrives on scene within, whether they're still on the phone with the caller, so. But it should be a pretty much near a hundred percent use on those calls. So I think it's something the public deserves and probably expects when they call nine-one-one, to be able to get some pre-arrival instructions from experts there. So that program will raise the level of care we give to the members of the community when they call nine-one-one going forward. Secondly, we've gone through some planning meetings. We're all set for Christmas by the Lake, looking forward to it. It's one of my favorite events for the, the year coming up at the first weekend in December. And then, as we talked about two weeks ago, Officer Pavelka and his partner Ahys, AKA Ace, have been working the street now for a week, been deployed a couple of times with some successes too. So the training's kicking in, everything's going really well with that, and we've been really happy with the services Tree Town Kennels provided us, the training they've done, and then Officer Pavelka's dedication to the, the program and how he's put a lot of time and effort into it there too. So, so far, it looks like it's been a pretty good success there. Any questions I can answer for you about those items or anything else?
So that, that, the use of the canine, is that reported in the paper recently?
Yes.
Yes, okay. That's, that's really good, is not, or I mean?
It's great, yeah.
That young?
Yeah. Great success. So the dog was deployed on a, a traffic stop, indicated the presence of narcotics, and then led to an arrest with somebody for some methamphetamine marijuana was in the car.
Neat. I don't know if it's so neat, but what happened?
If nothing else, the news story is a good deterrent for those who may bring that stuff into Clear Lake. There's a little more tools on the street there to deter that activity.
Any, any other questions, comments for Chief, counsel? Thanks.
Thank you.
Public Works, we don't have Jeremy here. Matt, do you have anything? Nothing else? Counsel, do you have any questions for Matt? He's been up here two or three times tonight. Nothing, thanks, Matt. Director of Finance, Jacob? Nothing? Okay. Under Mayor's Report, Stacy, you're on board. Welcome. Stacy Dawn, CEO of our Chamber of Commerce.
Mayor and Council, I'll keep it pretty short tonight, too. Like Chief Colby said, Christmas by the Lake, next week's Thanksgiving, and then it's Christmas by the Lake. It's hard to believe those are back-to-back weeks this year. Just for you guys to know, this week, we do have Business After Hours tomorrow night from four-thirty to six at Livonia's, and they are also bringing in Starboard Market. So that has to be a huge draw, I would think, the coupling of those two businesses. And then on Thursday, we're having a thirtieth anniversary celebration for Trish Funderman at Tapped, and that's from four to six. So when she started at the Chamber, only event in existence, it was the Fourth of July, and now we have a whole broad swath of events that we get to celebrate every year, and she's had her hand in all of them. So we just want to honor the work that she's done to, to build the events that we have happening in Clear Lake. And then just looking ahead a couple of weeks, our holiday edition of our quarterly coffee is Friday, December nineteenth. So you can wear an ugly Christmas sweater or a pretty Christmas sweater, pretty much your choice, but it's a great way to stay connected to what's going on in the community. That's all I have. Any questions?
I want to emphasize, Trish, if, if you can get to that reception for her, Trish Funderman is a trooper at the.
To say the least.
I mean, for that, she sets out the parade, Fourth of July Parade, pretty much, year after year.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think you just have no idea what she does until you're working alongside her.
Thursdays on Main, she's up and down that street.
Yeah.
All day long.
Pulling garbages as soon as it's over. I mean, I, just the amount of things she does to bring so much joy to our community. It's, it's worth celebrating. So I hope you can come four to six on Thursday.
Very much, very much so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any further comments, questions?
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Appreciate that. Chad, Economic Development, North Iowa Corridor.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, Mayor and Council. Appreciate it. Guess just one, a few quick notes. A couple of weeks ago, we had Debbie Durham up in town for another ribbon cutting over at the MEC, which was great to have her up here. We were able to have her do a presentation for our board and, and some other folks in the area after that, and then also got to tour around to Lake Pin and Play and Livonia's. She, because she wanted coffee, I wasn't really to her, but we had to get her in there for some good coffee, and then over to, to the Lake Theater to show her that, and again, kind of put in good word for potential grant application on that project. So just as always, she's been a great ambassador for that project and the whole downtown area. So really appreciate having her up here and, and speaking to our groups and, and showing very strong support for that again. And I've told you a million times, but it is fun. Anytime I'm anywhere in the state, she always brings up the Clear Lake Project first. So it's a, and she reiterated that for us all again here that week. So very cool that, of her to do that. A lot of stuff continuing forward in housing. We did have David Miller is the Director of Homes for Iowa. That program is essentially homes that are made down in Newton, they're prison industries homes, but they're made there, and then you can purchase those and bring them to any community. So we've been exploring that as a possibility, you know, depending on the right fit, but hosted them in Mason City so that all of our regional partners could come and explore that as well. You can potentially get homes built and placed for, in the two hundred thou, sale range in two, two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand, so good potential opportunity. But just trying to learn more about that, see if it'd be a fit anywhere for us or in the county or surrounding counties. Also, a lot of legislative stuff coming up with that season coming, coming fast, for better or for worse. Got to sit in a roundtable event this past week that was focused on property taxes, and three of our legislators were there. Kind of one of the encouraging things, all three of them kind of noted that, yeah, they recognize property taxes as a concern for a lot of people. It's certainly going to come up down there this, this year. But all three of them said, you know, they want to be careful, they don't want to infringe on the local community and your ability to do what you need to do. So I was encouraged that that's where they all started. They, all of them said, we don't want to be the ones telling them what to do, and, and local communities can vote for their, their community leadership. So I think that's important. Obviously, we have our feet in both sides of this thing, because we work with you guys, and we also work with our industries, and obviously, none of them like to pay taxes and, and our community members. But there needs to be a good balance, and I, I think that's the perspective we hope people come to that, that issue with down there. NIAC has their Legislative Breakfast coming up also on Wednesday, seven thirty AM, so hope folks can get out to that. Always a very good event. One of the, another issue that's going to come up is on workforce this year, and specifically the two sixty E program, which is our workforce training program that was actually recommended for essentially getting cut by the DOGE Committee. So something that we want to watch very closely as well, if you guys remember on the McKesson Project, that was really a program that significantly set us apart as, as a state compared to Austin and, and that application process. So if they do get rid of that, we would, we just want to make sure that there is something that replaces that effectively. There's obviously always some things that could be better about any of those programs and some of the funding mechanisms, but we are watching that close and, and want to make sure that we don't lose something that's been a, a big value for us. And then I guess next week's Thanksgiving, so just want to be, appreciate all you guys. Thank you for the partnership we have and the great job that you all do for our communities. So I'll leave it there.
I just, do you recall that with McKesson and how that set us apart, what we did and, made some interesting news at that?
Yeah. It was over a million-dollar fund training for them, and that, they said they'd never seen anything like that anywhere else they'd been. So that's, we got to protect that a little bit, one way or the other, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, thank you, thank you. The, as I came by City Park this morning and on our way, the seasons not only are changing meteorologically, you might say, it's also in our town because our city council today, I do believe, we're putting up, what do we call them, garlands around the?
The garlands.
Oh, I got that right.
Public court.
Garlands around the light poles and Santa's House, I believe, was moved in. We have the floating dock out, that's been out for some time, but that simply means that summer's done. And here we go with the wonderful winter coming on. But we certainly do have some things, and I'm sure on our December first meeting, we'll kind of get into that because of the Christmas by the Lake. I think it's that following weekend, if I'm not mistaken. And that will be an exciting experience this year, I, I believe. It's well worth bringing in the relatives to watch that one, that, that particular day. It's great. City Administrator Steve, do you have anything?
Yeah, yeah, so good segue there. Our Public Works Director Jeremy asked, to be excused today, but I did ask him for some updates, and he mentioned just that, that the winter, winter decorations are, went up today, mentioned that railroad crossing work that we did there on twentieth is, is completed. So I think that's gone, that's been received well. That we started doing drainage work of the youth baseball fields, and that the winter maintenance equipment is prepped and ready. Not that we need it, but it's ready in case we do. So those are some of Jeremy's updates to share with you tonight. As far as what I have, just wanted to mention that we talked here a few weeks ago, you know, about the, the Main Avenue, Fourth, Fortieth Development, going in out there and, and working with them on a development agreement for the materials to help put in water and sewer main. We're going to be looking to have that development agreement on the agenda for the December first, so just be mindful of that. Just want to talk, you know, mention the goal setting. I thought the goal setting went really well the other night. We, we were able to get through it, and we cut it short to four hours, so we weren't there that entire time, so that was nice. But I think we made some nice inroads there, and, and I've received the initial final report from Elizabeth, and so we'll be finalizing that and eventually getting that to councils for you guys to, to eventually approve that. We do have a billboard lease that's coming due out there on Fourth Avenue. We have a billboard out there on city property that we have a lease with, which is something we may look at not renewing that lease based on the fact that we're going to be redoing Fourth Avenue out there, and might create some visual obstructions that make that, with trees and plantings and whatnot that make that, that billboard non-viable going forward. But we'll discuss that further. Just to follow up on what Chad mentioned a little bit, the Lake Theater, we did have Debbie get through that the other day, and so been having follow-up discussions on, on the Catalyst Grant and the emergency side of that. And they are, we've initially talked about maybe doing some roof replacement, but they also wanted to include facade work too. So between what we've already committed from the forgivable loan, between that and up to a hundred thousand dollars in catalyst money plus some of their own, we might be able to get a lot done there to kind of kick off that project. So we're kind of, we're kind of going, as Jim Thompson said, we're kind of doing something that they've really never done before, but it's, it's a great way to kind of leverage everything that's happening with that. Tomorrow, the city, city hall staff will be getting their tour of the Music Experience Center, and we're going to have lunch over there as well. So we've got that happening tomorrow. And last but not least, Jacob sent out the, the, the budget preparation calendar for fiscal year twenty-seven. So we're getting prepped for the next budget season, which TIP certification, that's, that kind of kicks it off anyway, but, but we've got that coming down the road. So otherwise, that is all for me.
I just want to mention that football team this year was outstanding. They kind of ran into an interesting roadblock, I guess you would say. That was interesting football in my mind, but anyway, they did very, very well. Some outstanding athletes there. FFA, where I happen to watch them on TV, they did well out in Indianapolis, and Mayor Protem Ebling's daughter was right in the mix there, and they did a wonderful job. I don't know what the placing was, but they did well, I do believe. That was neat to see. Winter sports are starting out, fall sports were, you know, I think they even have girls' tennis in the fall now anymore, along with boys and girls cross-country. And soccer, no, soccer's in the spring. But anyway, get out there if you can, watch those kids, young people, excuse me, they're not baby goats, anyway, so. Anyway, great community, great community. Anything else this evening?